I'm sorry with my oath, so I'm going to ask everyone to first of all not speak over when people are speaking. The other thing is that it's extremely important that we keep the decorum in this auditorium. Remember that this is a governmental function. One of the things that I want to remind everyone is, as we have to pass, when your time is up, which is the three minutes, we expect you to sit down and allow someone else to have another three minutes. So we are expecting, and we will keep to that very strictly, as we have to pass. And with that folks, as you know, we have a very important month that now has begun. And for this reason, I feel that it is very apropos, folks, very apropos, that all of us not only provide the kind of respect we ask for, but that you respect one another. For that reason, I think that at this point, from this point on, we are going to keep the decorum that we expect from a city council meeting. And with that folks, I want to welcome all of you tonight. And particularly, because it is a very special night, a very special month. And with that, I'm going to give you a couple of very important people here. First of all, I want to welcome Ms. Umi Diamond to our city council. And folks, she deserves a great hand and applause. Thank you. Long Beach, Long Beach respects one another, and we're going to keep to that. The other thing that we respect, and I have to say this because I remind people all the time, of our history in Long Beach. We've had Martin Luther King walk the streets of Long Beach. And we are very proud of everything that Dr. Martin Luther King represents to us. And like I've mentioned over and over again, I would not have been able to go to college if it wasn't for a Martin Luther King scholarship that was given to me. I wanted to be hooky once in 1968 to receive that scholarship. And I would not be here today. And this is why I remind everyone that the message and the value that Dr. Martin Luther King gave forth was a respect for one another. And this is what we're going to do tonight. With that folks, I am very happy to announce and to introduce our city councilwoman, Lisa Moore.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome you to a city council meeting. And tonight is a special night because tonight we are celebrating Black History Month. And so in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King, he said, "That love is the only force that's capable of transforming an enemy into a friend." And our mission as a city is to celebrate one another. And so we stand today to recognize the contributions of African Americans in this nation, but also within our city. We stand tonight to recognize the fact that Black History is indeed American history. And so tonight, I am proud as a member of the city council to join along with my colleagues in celebration of Black History Month and to present certificates of achievement. I do need to say tonight with that same spirit that we stand as a council recognizing that rumors divide us, but truth empowers us. And today I was very disturbed because I saw this. This is not who we are. This is not the council. This is not the city of Long Beach. And we will all work together to make sure that this never happens again in the history of our city.
What is it?
What is it? It's saying, "I'll help save the Long Beach, New York Martin Luther King Center this Tuesday." Everyone has a right to a sample, but we do not have the right to promote rumors and/or lies to divide us. That's not who we are.
What I said.
You can say whatever you want to say, but that's not who we are. And so tonight, if you stay here, you sit, and you listen, you will find out the truth. But let us not come and attack each other before we have the opportunity to hear that truth. And so tonight, we celebrate as a city of Long Beach these contributions, but we celebrate as one, one family. That's what makes us the great and beautiful city that we are. In keeping that in mind, I'd like to move forward with the acknowledgement of those who have made contributions to this great city. I'd like to read the first proclamation. Whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize Black History Month in honor of the countless accomplishments and contributions of African Americans to our nation and city. And whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize African American community leaders who work tirelessly empowering our youth in Long Beach. And whereas the city of Long Beach does desire the publicity and knowledge, and I'll leave the names blank, the principal of the Long Beach High School in recognition of his commitment towards developing our youth into the next generation of community leader. And now therefore, the city council and the city manager and the city of Long Beach in recognition of his exemplary service to the community, proudly present this first proclamation to Jeffrey Myers. I want to share a couple of words in respect to our principal, Mr. Myers. We all know that Jeffrey Myers is the newly appointed principal of the Long Beach High School. We know that he holds an M.A.S.T.C.T.I.C.K. at Administration from St. John's University. That he's obtained both a Master of Art in Teaching Social Studies and a Master of Art in History from Stony Brook University. He is also a candidate for the Doctor of Education in Educational Administration and Leadership from St. John's. We know, and we are so proud, that Mr. Myers works with our children day in and day out. We congratulate you, Mr. Jeffrey Myers. Our next proclamation will be granted to James Hawes. A few things about Mr. Hawes. We all know his name has been avid worker since he was elected. We know that he worked for the city of Long Beach and has been an executive committee member for the N double A C P. In December of 2005, he was elected as the youngest member on the Board of Prestige for the M.O.K. Center. And in one year, he was elected to vice chair of the board and is currently the board chair. James is also a member of numerous organizations numerous for us to announce here, but he has been credited with over seventy four citations, some of which represent recognition from federal, state, as well as local governmental bodies. Congratulations, James Hawes. I am now excited to present this award, Shakira Wilson. Somebody should stand for Shakira Wilson because she is a young woman. Shakira is a long Island-based African American painter from the city of Long Beach, New York. And she graduated from Pratt Institute with a degree in fine art painting. And Shakira is also a part of the West End Art Organization and the Long Beach Art Council. Shakira's work is based on African-American culture and beauty. She teaches art to children and adults because she believes that art will bring peace and fulfillment to their hearts. We congratulate you. It's a great pleasure that I once again congratulate now Diamond Lambert. Is anyone here? She's running late? Okay, she's running late? Okay, Diamond, as many of you know, she is the president of the Long Beach High School African American Club. So we also celebrate Diamond, hoping she is still on her way. And now it's a great pleasure that I present this proclamation to Dana Boylan. Dana is an experienced attorney in her twelfth year of service in Nassau County. And today, her primary area of focus is community relations and youth development. She is the Director of Community Reentry Initiatives and Youth Development Programming at the Nassau County District Attorney's Office. And we know that she also oversees several community youth development and intervention initiatives sponsored and funded by the District Attorney's Office. We celebrate you, Miss Dana Boylan. And now I'm excited to present the next proclamation to Renee Flagler. Renee Flagler is the Executive Director of Girls Inc. of Long Island, whose mission is to empower girls to be strong, smart, and bold. Renee is also an award nominated author, award-winning journalist, as a professor and speaker who is passionate about encouraging women and youth to pursue their passion and purpose. She's a founding board member and former board chair for LEAK, Literary Empowerment Action Project Global. We salute you, Renee Flagler. And last but not least, I present this proclamation to Thurston O'Neill. Thurston O'Neill is a youth job developer for family and children's associations. He began working in Long Beach area within the Long Beach Ladders to Success Program in May of last year. And he, along with his team of ten-page professionals, have laid the foundation for a successful work readiness program that directly affects the lives of our youth in the Long Beach community. Once again, we celebrate you today, Thurston O'Neill. Okay, so let's once again put our hands together to celebrate all the back for all of you.
Again, I want to thank you and thank you to the celebrants tonight for their wonderful contribution to community service and to our local Long Beach. Again, just to remind you folks that the Good and Welfare is at the end of the meeting. It's been the tradition here for many, many years that you sign up for that during the meeting, but once the meeting is over, the people that have signed up will be those that will speak at Good and Welfare who will not take any more days after that. Again, very important again that we have a three-minute limit on the duration of your comments. We do want to hear your comments. I've always said that, and I continue to say that tonight, that it is so important for us to hear what you have to say as a governmental agency. And with that folks, I'll turn over on meeting to Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, February 7th, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. The board of local council members Diamond, Councilmember Vandell, Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Robert, President Torres.
Here.
At the record indicate the presence of City Manager Jack Sherritt, Corporation Council Robert Aristocic, now serves the plan.
My big pleasure to ask, Ms. Diamond, this one is on me.
I am the United States of America and the republic which stands on nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I've been asked to read a statement, a statement that really, not really too old, folks. And I won't wait until I have everyone's attention. It reads the following. "The Charter contains a section regarding the prevention or the preservation of the form. Under this section, the presiding officer is charged with the responsibility of maintaining order in this meeting. It is advised, again, that from now on, the following three striking rules will apply. One, an individual who is out of order will receive a warning. Two, an individual who remains out of order, again, is given another warning. And we will be made aware, particularly the police here that is here in the room with us, that person is out of order. And finally, if the prior warnings were not successful, the police commissioner will be directed to remove the individual from the council." And we mean that, folks. Or on removal to relieve, folks, then that person is asking to be arrested. Okay? "The procedures will be followed consistently, uniformly, and with no exception." And with that, I'll turn on meeting over to our Jack, our city manager.
Hey, the update for this evening. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome our new city councilwoman, Umi Diamond. On behalf of the administration, congratulations to you all and over to our committee. City's intended to honoring the legacy and contributions that African Americans have made to our society and the local Long Beach community. The city will be hosting a number of events to celebrate Black History Month, including free movie screenings at the Long Beach Cinema Tour and Long Beach Public Library. Please visit the city's website for full schedule. Another spectacular Super Bowl Sunday for the Long Beach Polar Bears, who are certainly undefeated on Super Bowl Sunday. Had a great time charging into the ocean surrounded by 20,000 of all of our closest friends. Personally, this is my sixth consecutive year taking a plunge as city manager. The Long Beach Polar Bears have raised millions of dollars for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and that's truly what it's all about. Thanks everybody for coming out. As mentioned at previous meetings, the city's carryout bag ordinance takes effect on Earth Day, April 22nd. In anticipation of the new rule, Long Beach's middle school art club and National Junior Honor Society along with teacher Laura Swan recycled T-shirts into reusable bags recently. This is just one component of the city's ongoing campaign to inform residents of this environmentally conscious law. Just yesterday, the city hosted a special information session at Bridgewater for local businesses. Stay tuned to the city's website, Facebook page for information on additional sessions that will take place in the coming weeks. With significant community input over the past two years, city's comprehensive plan is being prepared for presentation to the Long Beach City Council. Please join your friends and neighbors on February 16th at 7:30 at the Long Beach Public Library for a comprehensive planning community meeting, which is actually the fifteenth community meeting, to provide information on the planning process, the plan, and overview of how public input has been incorporated. City staff will be on hand to answer any questions you may have. In 2015, the city of Long Beach restructured our fire department and in so doing, modified our service delivery model. Since that time, the city of Long Beach and the Professional Fires Association Local 287 have remained locked in litigation over various aspects of that infrastructure. The firefighters union and the city are pleased to announce that we recently executed a settlement agreement whereby the union agreed to withdraw the vast majority of the legal challenges surrounding the restructuring. The city in turn has agreed to provide long-term job security for current union members, which also ensures the continuity of the state's firefighting force. The party that entered into this agreement knowingly, voluntarily, in good faith, with the hope of fostering a new and improved relationship. And finally this evening, Moody's Investor Services has again issued a positive outlook for the city of Long Beach, marking the ninth consecutive positive credit action issued for this administration. As you may recall, February 2016, Moody's had upgraded the city's credit rating from B double A one, I'm sorry, to B double A one from B double A two. This credit rating maintains that rating with a positive outlook going forward.
Thank you. You know, just the point that our city managers made. This weekend was an extremely important weekend for us where we had thousands and thousands of people on our boardwalk and consequently, thousands of people that jumped into the water too. And I had a few minutes that I could be here with everyone before I took a train to Albany. And I have to say that the trip to Albany was a very special one. We, Miss Moore and myself, were present with the governor in the governor's mansion, and we got to bring up some of the most important issues that we have here in Long Beach. He's very proud, I have to say, of our boardwalk. And of course, he feels that it is his boardwalk too. And we commended him too. But I have to say that there are many issues that are to be facing this city, our residents, our physical island. And we need everyone to work together to be able to make the next decade a success for this little barrier island. And with that folks, we're going to begin our meeting. Mr. Fraser?
Thank you. First item is a public hearing for board of municipal ordinances of the city of Long Beach and Board of Elders.
Okay, in the desire of the city to earn New York State's Clean Energy Committee designation through the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, local governments can adopt a policy to report the energy use of municipal buildings on an annual basis known as building energy benchmarking. As a clean energy community, the city will be able to apply for further grants to implement additional clean energy actions within the city.
Okay. With that, I'm going to ask the council if there are any comments on this item number one. Are there any comments? No comments from the council? Any comments from the public on the first item? Yes, sir. Just leave for you to state your name. Welcome.
My name is Jim Hennessy, 617 West Olive Street. My comment to this is regarding the fact that, well, possibility in my mind, in fact, in your opinion, the possibility that Diamond voted on item will be illegal. The city charter clearly states that no person can be a city council person unless they are an elector of the city.
Okay, Mr. Hennessy.
You're stopping.
No, 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 you're going to stop. You're going to stop. No, 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 I'm sorry. You're going to stop, Jim Hennessy. Stop. No, no, it's stop. You're going to stop. Okay. First of all, that's not on the item. Okay? Let's be very clear that we are talking about item number one, not about opinions, not about anything else, Jim Hennessy. We appreciate you coming here. We appreciate your mission and comments, but let's stick to the item.
Is she voting on this item?
She is? She's on the council.
So she's voting on the item?
She's on the council.
So she's voting on the item?
She's on the council. I'm answering you. She's on the council.
I have to ask, are you questioning legitimacy in the legality of her vote?
Okay, well, that's not on the item. No, we're not going to answer.
So you're telling me I can't speak?
You're not going to speak because it's not on the item.
About the fact that she's going to cast a vote on an item that we're talking about right now?
No, you're not speaking on that.
Now, I ask, can you, Mr. Aristocic, is that resounding on the school's greatest determination? So even though she, I went to the board of elections tonight and looked at her voter registration form. It shows that she changed her registration in March of 2015, which is less than, sorry, more than, less than two years ago. She gets left in the ability to vote. I inspected her voter registration file today. This goes directly to the heart of her vote. This is not the result of the legality of her vote.
If that is all that you're making the point, we appreciate it.
That's not it. You want?
Okay. Can I repeat one time? Yes.
Two minutes, thank you. So I went to the board of elections today, and under the New York State Spoil Act, I examined Miss Diamond's voting registration and voting record. She registered as a Democrat on October 27th, 1999. On October 12th, 2000, she changed her party affiliation to Republican. On October 22nd, 2002, she changed that registration back to Democrat. On August 13th, 2007, she changed her name from Chuma or Uma to Umi. On March 6th, 2015, less than two years ago, Miss Diamond changed her voting address from 856 West Port Blaine Woodmere to 10 Franklin Boulevard in Long Beach. On March 20th, 2015, that same year, Miss Diamond added an apartment number to that address on Franklin Boulevard. On May 18th, 2015, there was some sort of internal review of Miss Diamond's voter registration by both a Democrat and a Republican inspector. You don't know why that internal investigation took place, but it did. I foiled the results, I'll get them soon. Regarding Miss Diamond's voting history, prior to March 6th, voter registration change from Woodmere to Long Beach, Miss Diamond was an active voter in Woodmere, voting every single election between the time of her registration to 2015. These public records are irrefutable. They show that Miss Diamond has not been an elector or resident of this city for the previous two years. As such, for voting on this item, every item on the agenda, really question the legality of vote and the legality of this entire council. The looking at the Holland matter, we're just not paying. You didn't properly invite this to Sherman when he lied on the election. Well, when he lied, I know he lied on his application. He gave this mission a patent contract which violates the city charter. And now, I'd love to say, let's follow the charter. Let's follow the charter. She shouldn't be here. And yet, she's not helping. So there's a lot of questions. There are a lot of questions. The biggest question I have is, you know, if Miss Diamond says her domicile is in Long Beach for the past nine years, that's what she told the Herald, then why did she, why did she only start voting in Long Beach? Why was she voting in Woodmere between her registration in 2015 and 2016?
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy.
And only started voting only two years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy.
And I'll get up there and see the light and say the same thing.
Thank you. Okay. Very important at this point right now that we stick to the item. None of the things you mentioned have anything to do with the item. Mr. Hennessy, you have to warn now twice. Folks, and we're going to keep the forum here. Thank you. Thank you.
Answer the question.
Folks, thank you. If we are not going to conduct ourselves properly here, there cannot be you.
Will you not conduct yourself, answer the question?
I'll say yes. If we do not conduct ourselves... If we do not conduct ourselves properly, we cannot hold this meeting, folks. Thank you. We're going to move on to our next item, folks. I'm sorry. Are there any other comments on this item number one? And again, I warn everyone, we must keep to the content of this item. Are there any? Yes. Mr. Bendo, please, look forward. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bendo.
Re-election is coming, so we're talking.
Sorry, folks, this is going to be boring. This is John Bendo. In the ordinance here that's being proposed, there are some dates that seem to jump all over the place. In section 7288, it's saying that the, for the 30 days of the implementation of the ordinance, the Commissioner of Public Works is going to submit a report to the city with basically the outcome of the benchmarking. But in section 7286, it doesn't release that information to the public until September 1st. So why is there a six-month gap between when the information is made available to the council versus when it's made available to the city? So those dates just don't jive?
I understand the Commissioner of Public Works and the chairman to speak with.
Because I'm also guessing you need that information for budgeting purposes. You're doing the budget around March, so you need that information to inform any budgeting items you need to do. But why is there a gap there?
Okay, we're going to look into that, and we have the commissioner in here that maybe perhaps would like to comment on that. This is Mr. Commissioner of Public Works, Mr. Orlando.
Yeah, I think the confusion is that the benchmarking data will be available. The September 1st data is the comparison of the usage through that six-month period compared to what we had done up to the benchmark point. We have to measure everything first, electricity use, gas, natural gas using, where it's being used in terms of lighting, heating, and things of that nature. And then every September, there'll be a report on how we did against those original numbers. So the benchmarking information will be available when it's finished, there's the 30 days. Really, every September, there'll be a report on how we did versus the benchmark. I hope that clears up.
Okay, then. So very good question, Mr. Bendo. Thank you.
Another benchmarking would be there, but we have to have a thought.
No, no, I get that. Useful information to develop the processes and come back to that.
But we need to know how to do it so that, so.
And finally, just a clarification. In section 7283, it says that this covers, the covered municipal building is a building or facility that is owned or occupied by the city. But in section, sorry, 7, in fact, 7288, says the Commissioner of Public Works may promulgate regulations necessary for the administration of the requirements. What regulatory authority does give the Commissioner of Public Works over a building that the city occupies but does not own?
It certainly is an interesting, where does the labor, John, this associated with, you know, tracking our energy uses?
Well, no, because it says the Commissioner of Public Works may promulgate regulations necessary for administration under requirements. So gives them regulatory authority, and municipal-owned building, yeah. But in a city-occupied building that is not city-owned, what's the regulatory authority of the Commissioner over a building that's that? This gives them regulatory authority over a building the city doesn't own?
It says this article. This article.
Can you hear it?
Well, it's warned, it says for another article, so the whole article is related to.
Okay, the figure of the image, the mark of the person you have?
I think the confusion actually references this article, this article, capital A, this one that's before us now, not the entire quote, either multiple of them down, articles and quotes. It's just this article, the building that's in this, within this article.
Do you question about the word occupied?
Correct, and it's not a city-owned building, it's a city-occupied, that's what I think.
I'm not sure how the council votes on something that's not informed.
Thank you, Mr. Bendo. Are there any other comments on this item number one, folks?
Can you, oh, once again, just go back to answer any questions? Can we just give us a summary, a quick summary with respect to the connotation we've learned here too, in respect to the occupancy, because I think that?
To be honest, I think it's a distinction without, that all cities, all buildings here that are owned by the city are also occupied by the city. I think it's a, it's a, it's a other way of parsing words here, but trying to capture every building that's actually owned by the city.
Okay, so it's just a second thing?
Yeah, I think it's an administrative issue.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions on, or comments on item number one?
Is the clock still working? Because he was up there longer than three minutes. That's all I wanted.
The clock stopped a while ago.
Okay, so it stopped. We warned.
Okay, so it looks like I, we don't see any more questions. We are going to leave this, okay, this hearing, we're going to close it at this point right now.
Okay. Our second public hearing is ordinance amendment code ordinances of the city of Long Beach regards fire prevention and protection.
Okay, this amendment allows the city to create a position for a third assistant chief, which is an unpaid position within the fire department in order to continue best practice methods for the department. I ask representatives of the fire department to come up and make a presentation.
Mr. Lewis? Welcome.
Deputy Commissioner William Wood Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York. We stand on behalf of the Long Beach Police Department Fire Department. We're here tonight to request that you amend the code ordinances to allow for a third assistant chief. Currently, there's one chief, two assistants. I have to understand the Long Beach Fire Department is the busiest fire department on Long Island. So the chief, two assistants, they have a regular work responsibility. It's truly a full-time job. Well, three of them, they have families, they do have, they're a paying full-time job, and then they jump, there are other full-time jobs in the fire department. So they're trying to perform their duties, they're always trying to find ways to make things work more efficient, do things that better, make the fire department better, make them better. Better for the city, better for them. They let them take on these responsibilities, but they, they, they feel the need that, they think a third assistant chief would really help them. Make the burden that much less. I understand the duties of them, it's a couple of different groups. There's on-scene, it's like the body, car accidents, emergency service call. They're there, and they operate like quarterbacks, like direct personnel equipment, to make sure that everyone does what they're supposed to do, and things would work much more efficiently when they're there. Now, there's a problem with there being only three chiefs in that respect. As we said before, they all have full-time jobs, there's families, there's, there's all available. And they also said the city has a busy fire department on Long Island. So all too often, there are gaps when there's chiefs available. Additionally, in some ones especially, there's more than one call at one time. So they have to see which one they're going to go to and do their best to get the vote, and it always just doesn't work out that well. So they feel that a additional chief will increase the probability, possibility of the chief being on scene to directly manage personnel and personnel that are there. And without doubt, they believe that when the chief is on scene, that things do work much more efficiently, it's much more, you know, you, better usage of the personality. The other part of their job is administration. They discover the training classes, they keep the documents related to the chief, they order equipment, they do inventory and equipment, they keep supplies, they go supplies. The list goes on and on. Here, the assistant chief, assistant, that matter as well. They almost amount of paperwork that they have to push around, and then one additional person taking some of that on, really helps take some of the burden off of them. You have to realize that a lot of the other surrounding volunteer fire departments in our area, most of which, all of them are not nearly as busy as we are, they've already realized the sub-additional assistant chiefs, and almost all, not all, but almost all have three assistant chiefs in addition to the main chief. Now, the volunteer fire department is always grant willing, able to help citizens protect their duty. And they're here tonight requesting you to help them do that job and doing that, and amend the code to allow for this third assistant chief. I actually think so, my presentation.
Just a question for clarification. This would mean that an additional individual would show a fire of, of, currently handle? Is that? One more, one more chief in the mix to appear at the scenes of events, yes. Thank you. Are there any comments from the council?
I just have a question for clarification. I understand it's an unpaid position.
That's correct.
But are there costs inherent in creating a position, the essential costs, just to be able to?
Well, I know the chief does get a vehicle, they have to be able to respond. But there are already, the vehicles are in place, they're normally protected and purchased. And when there's a fire, the chief has to jump in that car and head toward you.
If available, yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Clarification for how the chief selects?
They're more, they're voting on by the members of the volunteer fire department.
Okay. First, we thank you for all that you do. The city is grateful to all of you. I guess I have a question really with respect to assessment. Can you give me a sense, how, in terms of just assessment, how did you come to the decision at this time that this was needed? I mean, obviously, you know the journey's around, you're doing what you need to do. But is there any assessment, is there any survey? Did you conduct a survey? Did you do any other work or research to come to this conclusion? Because I know that within our city, we've had our ICMA report. I'm just trying to figure out what, where we would turn to the assessment.
I'm going to defer to ex, or to answer that question.
Thank you.
Chief Corbett, welcome down.
Thank you, council, I appreciate you listening to us tonight. Ms. Moore, we've concerned, speaking with other departments after Hurricane Sandy, and using the ICMA fact sheets that we've relented in many areas of our administration. Just a quick scenario, I was blessed to become fire chief here in town. I also worked for the city. I was given a little bit extra leeway to function as fire chief when I had downtime working. Being a volunteer fire chief is a full-time job. Even though I worked for the city, I missed, I have twins, I missed their birthdays, I missed a lot of plays, I missed dinners, so having one extra person to fill that, and if someone doesn't work for the city, that's not as likely as you think. This person is working that full-time job, commuting back and forth, maybe spending time with their family, then coming to the firehouse three, four, five nights a week to do paperwork. That's basically the position for. In addition to firefighter scene, and where are they at, see?
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And are there any comments from the public on this item number two on this additional chief to our volunteer fire department? Question, yes, I see a hand back there, please come forward.
Good evening, Sam Bendo. Just to be sure before I start, I have a series of questions, and I'm wondering if my time is going to be stopped? Do you think they can be answered? I prefer them to be answered tonight, if possible.
Well, that's the precision, if you stop.
Okay. As I begin, I'd like to thank the council for hosting this public hearing on such an important change of the code of ordinances. Before I start asking any questions, I'd like to point out that while I am a career firefighter and paramedic, and a member of the union's executive board, I want to make it very, very clear that I am not speaking on behalf of the union. I'm here as a resident. I'd also like to say that this is nothing against the volunteer firefighters, volunteer fire department. They are a tremendous asset to the community, and as a former volunteer firefighter, I understand and know the sacrifices that they take to protect the community. In the past, I've stood alone with the residents of public hearings, so have asked questions. And while the councils found themselves unable to answer critical information, they still proceeded to vote anyways. I expect, but I hope not, of the possibility of this to happen again. But in the hopes of transparency, that each of the council members understand the implications of their vote, and not to vote for something that they are unsure of. I have made a decision on, that they are unsure of. I've been told that once the council members put something on the agenda, that they've already made a decision on the matter, and the whole public process is just a theater. I truly hope that tonight, that is not the situation, and I look forward to each council member to make their informed decisions. I've heard the council recently say that they are chosen to make the tough decisions, but there's a big difference between a tough decision compared to an uninformed one. And I'm not saying that will occur tonight, but the residents will take notice. One of the main reasons I'm looking forward for this clarification, first, I'd like to see that it is necessary, but also because the city commissioned a $55,000 report paid for by the taxpayers. It used the report to validate a very significant change for the makeup of the career aspect of the fire department. The city has also spent hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars to protect this report, and now, it is going against the most critical recommendation of the report, as well as many other recommendations. As you know, there's been serious concerns, as well as legal challenges, to the department restructure that you spoke of before. The city has hinged the importance of the previous changes based on the recommendations of the ICMA report. While some of the legal challenges have been pulled back, many of them are still active. Also, if the city chooses to move forward with this new change for the personnel hierarchy of the department, it could offer new facts that could validate new legal challenges versus negative exposure for the city. So my first question, why is the city looking to do that right now? Am I timed stopped for an answer?
We hope, because I have 15 seconds.
Time, time, time. I'm not going to be able to hear the answer tonight before you guys make a vote.
We just stopped, we won't just continue asking questions.
Okay. Is the change in the charter necessary? Why is the city motivated to do this change? Why is it happening now compared to years in the past? What steps have been taken so far? Why is this report going against the ICMA report? What are the roles of chiefs? Why is this new chief going outweighing a career firefighter? Why the career firefighter is not helping with this issue? Is this an administrative or an operational change? The report itself says the current model needs to be fixed. It is broken, and this change can potentially create the instability highlighted by the experts. Your $55,000 report said specifically, the most critical, second, the most critical aspect is we're coming back from Hurricane Sandy. The second one is the overall health of the leadership of the fire department. It is the opinion that the organization is fractured. It is the assessment of the current organization structure is not positioned to manage such changes. The instability of organizational structure and leadership may detract from the success of the management process. The first, the first recommendation is to make a career chief, take care of all the burdens that were already brought by the volunteer firefighters, and the second one is to make sure that the volunteer chief will be a deputy, not to add another volunteer. Thank you so much.
Good question. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have to warn, I believe them, yeah.
Okay, you have to be right here, I believe them.
Here's your own ICMA report, the highlighted assets.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner, you have to be in the right area. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other, our team, hands up here? Matt, come up, please, thank you.
This is actually my stop on great pool.
Welcome, Matt Ward. I, 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 I see you back there, sorry.
30th and Ohio Avenue. After listening to both Commissioner Miller and ex-chief. After listening to both Commissioner Miller and Ex Chief Corrigan, you know, we realize, you know, how important our fire department is to us, and the volunteers do a phenomenal job. And when you listen to the challenges that are faced by these men that lead this department, you know, the busiest fire department here on the island, and I'm sure it probably includes Suffolk County as well, they face a lot, you know, whether or not with their home life, their regular work life, and then they have this full-time job as being leaders of a phenomenal fire department. But I want to go back to the ICMA report, you know, because that was something that did look at and that was referenced in regard to the administration of our fire departments, and to be able to coordinate the work between both the volunteer and the paid portion of our fire departments. And the one thing that they strongly recommended was hiring a paid fire commissioner, somebody that would then take over the administration part of running the fire department. That person, I guess, would be able to maybe oversee the personnel, the shifts of the assignment and work, maybe take care of the equipment that may be needed, all the necessary important functions to keep the fire department running smoothly. And, you know, considering the fact that it was deficient, and you think how well it's been working all these years, despite a lot of the hurdles that they have to overcome, that perhaps maybe the city should consider that if we pay this money, a lot of money for this study, and we follow this report to a certain part, why not follow it to its completion and take a look at the administration and strongly, I would strongly consider to give relief to a lot of these people that do run the fire department, and allow them to have somebody that they, that can truly run it and administer the fire department to the benefit of all, especially for them and for the residents here in the city of Long Beach. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this?
This president, I'm just, I'm just saying, I know that this item that is on for this public hearing is separate in part from the report, and that this is a question for the volunteer fire department, and I'd ask that the commissioner to elaborate on the relationship to the board as well.
Welcome, Commissioner, and welcome. Good evening. As a 37-year member of the volunteer fire department, as a fire commissioner, I think a lot of the points were made clear, but approximately 80% of their fire departments, volunteer fire departments on Long Island have at least four chiefs. Some of them even have five and six. And yet, the ICMA report did find some lacking administrative functions of the fire department. This third assistant chief or the fourth chief will help assist that. A lot of our record-keeping issues or training, not that it wasn't being done, it wasn't properly documented, and that will be done by this position, as well as being able to take over fire scenes if necessary. I was a chief for 13 years. 13 years, spent a lot of time doing it away from my family, away from my work, and it does take its toll, but everybody back there, as volunteer firefighters, everybody that does the job does it because they want to and they love to. This is their town. They do it because they want to. They don't do it because one didn't get a year that the fire department pays for. They do it because they love it, they love their community. The chiefs take it one step further. These guys get out of bed night and day, they're away from their families, they're out in the cold, and for nothing, they get a call. You know what? It's not worth it if you're doing it for the call, believe me. After 13 years, I can tell you that. I understand the union, well, Mr. Pinto, have other issues. He brought it out when he brought up here and he said there should be a paid chief. It occurs wrong, yeah, but the system works. There are articles in the Wall Street Journal about volunteerism in the fire departments throughout the country, and tell them the volunteer fire department's been here for 107 years. The Long East Volunteer Fire Department, 107 years, serving this community. And I can't be more proud of this organization, and I hope the council keeps fit to approve this tonight. Thank you. Commissioner, we truly are grateful for the kind of work that you've done. I've known you many years, and I see the kind of work that you do personally, and again, we commend you, and thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on this item number two? Yes?
Since my comment was appropriately, I guess, replayed, I'd like to make comment. I never said it was, I recommended a paid chief, I said your report.
Mr. Pinto, I cannot recognize you, and thank you, thank you for sitting there.
We see you.
Okay. Any other comments from the... Okay. Okay. At this point, folks, we're going to leave this hearing open.
Motion?
I'm going to make a motion at this point. Before I do that, just want to say to our volunteer firefighters, there's no question about your loyalty, your commitment, they're truly the best that he does. The one thing that I just want to look to, I want to compare it to the ICMA. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to table, put it on the next agenda.
Speak loud.
That's the reason why I'm over the table. Sorry. Got that or...
Yeah.
To just repeat, issues that were brought up tonight regarding the ICMA report, I think we do something that deserves to be done right, deserves to be done thoroughly, which is what we usually do. I just want to move the table aside, so we can just compare it, some of the issues that are going on in ICMA. But I propose...
What does Mike define you, so we can hear?
Okay.
I'm going to second that motion with respect to table, I'd like further information on this very, very critical issue.
Item number two, Councilor Darnold.
Yes.
Yes.
I think the ICMA report, every series, and like you said before, and Mr. Pinto, I too. Hold on, guys. Hold on, hold on. Hold on. Let me vote, let me vote, let me vote.
Let him go.
I too think we could use the benefit of having a paid chief or commissioner, but having another chief that's unpaid, I'm prepared to vote for, so I vote no to table.
For what? I vote yes to table. It's a real challenge. I'm wanting to remember item two, but see, one is the ICMA report, so here's the couple on this item. I agree with the resolution. It's all, because we need, we need for people to hear what you're saying.
I agree with the resolution, and the city manager enters a two-shan service agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation for emergency services.
Okay, for shared services with the New York State Department of Transportation, these agreements would allow for new sharing of services while staging or lending of materials and equipment for the maintenance of state and municipal roads and highways, all while providing a cost savings by maximizing the effective utilization of both parties' resources. In short, it's an attempt to save free margins for the city.
Okay. The shared services, from what I can see here in the standing items, we're looking at a $100,000 safety, is that correct, City Manager?
No, there are no specific savings, this is per item, it's the agreement for shared services under $10,000, and shared services of up to $100,000.
Okay, very good. Okay, are there any questions, comments from the council on item number three? Any questions, comments from the public on item number three? We'll wait that, and we're going to move on to our next item. I implore the resolution authorized by the city. Says a man. Sorry, good to see you, and welcome. Please recognize, sorry.
I'm just reading this very last minute.
Just say your name.
Okay, oh, Allison Luchat.
What are shared services? What services do they?
This is in the amendment of emergencies, like we have with Hurricane Sandy, so we have a shared services agreement in place with the New York State Department of Transportation, so we can accept their resources quickly.
But doesn't that really that? Like, would this be like snow?
We do so through the county emergency operations center, but this will enable quicker. The, this relies on, currently, there's a reliance on the governor to try and state emergency, but as we've seen, particularly with the major storms, there's not always a statewide declaration.
So it's just, it's a statement?
Correct, correct. The statement is entering into this, the shared services agreement with actually everything spelled out on the...
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Luchet. Any other kinds of comments, questions possibly on item number three? Okay, just want to make sure we're covered here, we're going to move on to our next item. I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to amend the current agreement for the replacement of the roof at the MLK Center and to amend the budget.
Okay, we have a capital project that has been underway at the Martin Luther King Center to replace the roofs. Additional work is required at this time to repair the metal rooftop, and funding is provided and available through the capital improvement plan.
Just have a question, Mr. Chairman. How much additional cost is this project being for repairing?
This is actually covered within the budget that's already provided in the capital plan.
I see. Okay, I see the numbers here. Thank you. And are there any questions, comments from the council? No one? Questions, comments from the public, anyone? On item number four regarding the MLK roof repairs that are currently underway and we continue to cover them. Thank you. Okay.
I implore the resolution...
James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street here in our great city. One, I would like to thank the city council for the funds for the roof, and I love God and I love my community. And I thank my community because we came up here for a reason, and I just want to stay on this item, I will stay on the item so you don't give me a strike. But I appreciate the money that's being put to the center because we know we've had leaks for many years, and so I thank you and I appreciate you, so no one has to slip. I think every council person has saw the rain coming through the ceiling, and I thank God for just my community just being so amazing, and I know that my community has amazing decorum. We were talking about decorum, and I know that nobody has to warn my community, I'm just taking my time to say everything. Nobody has to warn my community about decorum, nobody has to warn my people that are here to support. No one has to say all of the things that are said that I don't hear in every council meeting. I've been, I've been to council meetings since I've been 13, and I've heard more about decorum and arrests and the commissioner than I've ever heard, and I find it kind of displeasing because my people that are here, which is our people in this city, change here knowing how to act, and will leave here knowing how to act, so we don't have to be warned. So with that being said, I appreciate the funds for the roof, and continuously look to do great work with this city. Thank you. As the chairperson, I am speaking of the Martin Luther King Center, and the community will be back to talk about the episode that was talked about earlier, so we can get to the bottom of it. Amen. God bless.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions from the public on item number four? We'll wait that, folks, we're going to move on to our next item. I implore the resolution authorized budget amendments for the general park and water park for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year.
This amendment incorporates additional revenue received by cities from federal and local public safety awards, called the permanent fees, a police grant, and an insurance free endorsement.
I see. Okay, any comments from the council on item number five, the appropriation of the funds to which the general park... No questions? Any comments, questions from the public? Yes?
Will you explain this?
Yes, come, come forward. Don't you see you?
Well, I see what you're talking about.
Okay, just say your name. So, we send General to 25 Place Park Avenue.
I would just like you to explain to me about the monies, where it's going, what it's going. Is it also lacking here? I'm always being told the city's broke, so I want to know where this is going and what's up.
I know, Mr. Chairman, but to you. So we have $22,000 coming in in a grant from Long East Ware regarding underage drinking in order to fund patrol. We have $9,000 coming in in a grant, a federal grant, for equipment for the police department. We have $800,000 coming in thanks to our corporation council who won a case regarding insurance recoveries, we spoke about at a recent city council meeting. And we have $75,000 in revenue coming in due to rebuilding works throughout the city in terms of permit fees, and additional $50,000 as well with street opening permit fees coming in as well. So we have to accept revenue as it comes in.
So you see, when it comes to funds, even accepting it, we have to formally accept it, just like when we use one, we have to formally...
These are grants, you don't have to pay that.
No.
The grant, in the grant. So this is, that's not going to merit anything, I mean...
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on item number five, folks? Very important item. Yes, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm on that though. I just wanted to get a little elaboration on why medical insurance went up $768,000. It's kind of the white elephant in this thing. That's a great question, and something I didn't think we'd get to speak about this evening. I would invite our controller up in town to say a quick word, but something we have been talking about in the office is that health insurance premiums this year have gone up 12%, which is a tremendous fixed cost that we face and we know other municipalities face as well, with a hefty, a hefty price now.
Welcome to the trouble. Hi, Joe.
Good evening. So just to elaborate on what Jack was saying, so our budget for health and medical insurance overall for the city is about $9.4 million, and so they go up about 12% for the second half of the year, so we need some of that insurance money out of council, who's able to get through the city's health cover, protect this budget, and all of that health insurance issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, any other questions on item number five? It's an important item, does involve so many details, parts of our budget. Okay, since I don't see any more hands, I'm going to dismiss everyone, version one, item six.
I implore the resolution authorized publication of those of public care and application of emergency parking requirements, prepares 78 East Park Avenue for a restaurant, designed to be only, and here will be health, February 21st, 7PM. I implore the resolution authorized publication of those of public care and application of emergency parking requirements, prepares 143 East Park Avenue for a clothing and shoe store, designed to be only, and here will be health, February 21st, 7PM. I implore the resolution authorized publication for hearing of mortgage, authorized financing, for course of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, state the estimated total cost thereof... the estimated total cost thereof of two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollar bonds of city finance set appropriation, designed to publication only, and hearing will be held February twenty-first at seven P M. Item nine is a resolution to authorize publication for hearing of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city in Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park, designed to publication only, and hearing will be held February twenty-first at seven P M. I implore the board to vote. Item one is the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city in Long Beach regarding building stuff.
I make a motion. I'm sorry. All right. How would you do? Do you? Right.
Go ahead. Yeah, that's where we're going to go.
Yes.
That's where we're going. Yes.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into two shared services agreements with the interstate department transportation for a building system.
Would you please move it off to the side?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead. Yes.
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 Item four is a resolution to authorize the city manager to amend the current agreement for the replacement of the roof at the MLK Center and to amend the budget.
Would you please move it off to the side?
I'll introduce it.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution to authorize the budget amendments for the general park and water park for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen fiscal year.
Would you please move it off to the side? Second?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution to authorize the city manager to amend the current agreement for the replacement of the roof at the MLK Center and to amend the budget.
Would you please move it off to the side? Second?
I will.
Second?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution to authorize publication of the notice of public care and application rate of parking requirements, prepares one forty-three East Park Avenue for a clothing and shoe store.
Would you please move it off to the side?
I will.
Second?
My second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
Item ten is a resolution to authorize publication for hearing of ordinance authorizing financing for course of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is two point, two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollar bonds of city finance set appropriation.
Would you please move it off to the side? Second?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
And item nine is a resolution to authorize publication for hearing of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city in Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park.
Would you please move it off to the side?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
And item nine is a resolution to authorize publication for hearing of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city in Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park.
Would you please move it off to the side?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
City manager, public personnel, reporters, we're talking about the city court, can we make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
My second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes.
That's where we're going.
Yes. Okay, folks, that, that ends the city council meeting itself and now we enter the beginning of the election again, we are, remind everyone that we have a limited limit on the comments and the questions. We may not be able to answer all the questions, uh, we need to be able to sometimes get back to you on some of those for either legal reasons or we don't have an answer, that's basically why we may not be able to answer the questions. Um, we have, we have our first, uh, person to come up and we're going to welcome this Mary Gollis Savage. Are you here, Ms. Gollis Savage? Okay. Welcome, Ms. Gollis Savage.
Hi, Mary. Hi, I'm Mary Gollis Savage. Um, I'm here on the edge of the state, um, wanting to thank the forest district and we look forward to, um, last night, some of our members went to the comprehensive plan and we also would like to have our department of public works, as I was saying, come to our meeting, uh, this month and then next month we're going to have your flexed bed renovation, but everyone loves the lighting and they were just asking about getting the brand and that, are we going to wait for spring to do that? What, our Neptune Boulevard? There's trees there now and you had mentioned there would be some other things, so I'm asking, are we waiting for spring to do that? And my next question would be, um, what are the next streets, uh, Boyd is pretty there, South Water Vine, um, I'm sure when, when we have, well, the commissioner, I haven't yet talked him, that's going to be probably one of the biggest questions and also that the storm with the flooding, the tight flood valves came up again. So just making you aware, these things are coming up, um, we, we spoke with the partner and he mentioned the last time he was here about getting both made it out from that side, from the bay, the sewer, the guy from the sewer comes out great, they come and they clean them out, but it doesn't go all the way out and there is debris in there and I could see it myself and those flaps are not closing, so that's part of the problem. But just to let you know, um, you know, these are some of the things that we are looking to have remedy, um, waiting for the corps of engineers, so if we could, um, get some answers, that would be great, you can have my email and I have a meeting on the sixteenth and I'd like to be able to tell them something about those types like that because I'm just getting emails and emails every time this is a third of the school. Thank you.
Please, thank you, Ms. Gollis Savage. But we have our next person, this Allison Luchet. Um, and it's, uh, Sherry Davis. Sherry Davis, are you still here? Sherry, please. Sherry. Stand over. Okay, welcome, this, uh... Speak into the mic, so you can...
I'm ready to speak, and I was going to say, on behalf of the MLK Center, I don't think we actually, because we're very far, and then Jake...
I can't hear you.
So they can't hear you?
Right up to the mic, right up to the mic.
Because I, I'm, I said that, I felt that the MLK Center is a good advice, it's really huge and Jane has helped us a lot, helps a lot of you. He, um, he helped us a lot and he had us on the right path and I just feel, I should just remember where it's at.
Thank you. A lot of courage to come up on this week, although we wouldn't recommend it for Sherry, but you need to do that more often. Thank you. It's so good to see you, I haven't seen you in a while. Okay. This is about the MLK Center. Not the first time I've been knew about it. Been coming here a long time, I stopped because of the BS that's going on, it's not right, okay? But everything's gone from the North Park area. The only thing that was left was the MLK Center. Amen. The store, everybody having a horse in their homes, okay? They don't have their wardrobe, they have nothing. What we have is a beautiful new park, thank you very much, and we have the MLK Center. Now a lot of people say, you know, that's not the problem. It is my problem. I'm a low B president. I've been pro-life for this year, although it's still extremely segregated, although it's, it's still got lots of, you know, small mind, I am still, still steadfastly hurting at the fact that the only thing that's left in the North Park area is the MLK Center. Jane Hodge was a chorus guard for kids when my kids were going to elementary school and I lived on Pine Street, okay? I came from the west end, got an apartment in Pine Street because I had a disabled daughter. That's the best place I took my kids. They don't have to have to live there, and there's not a problem. It doesn't matter if you're white, if you're black, or if you're Hispanic, or anything else. I can't say that for the rest of Long Beach, but I bet you say this, leave the MLK Center right where it is with the people that need it the most. I volunteer when I can and I watch, I'd say about eighty percent of the people in this auditorium now grow from children, from babies. You do everything else, I'm not worried about the kids, you grab supporting flowers or making a pretty life, I'm worried about the kids that are going to school that need the extra help and they get it at the after-school program, they get it through the community service, the heart service, it's going to make us really, we can get better. For a lot of these kids, the only place they have to go for sanctuary is there, of course, the meals may not be that great at home, but they'll get it at the MLK Center. This is Black History Month. I used to have the kids coming into my house watching Mississippi Burning, the Rosa Parks story, telling them about Rosewood, teaching them about the C D M, they're learning all about that in that MLK Center. Thank you, Mrs. Gollis.
And they see a lot of Jane.
Okay. Want you to know, folks, that we here at the council feel the same way. Okay, our next person, we have, uh, something up, it's Medina Kiori, is she here?
I'm here. No, it's okay, I'll pass.
You're okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody else take a turn?
Our dear friend, uh, Deselle Scott.
Welcome, Deselle. Good morning. Evening. Um, I just wanted to say, um, as an adult now, um, I grew up in Long Beach all my life. Um, I used to live in an apartment building right there where the fire department is now. I used to live across the street from City Hall where the nursing home is now. I used to live on a riverside by the Broadway, but it's no longer there. Um, I have family that lived down on Broadway and they tore the buildings down and they built up condominiums and they displaced many people, many African Americans that used to live down here, no longer live here anymore. And it seems that, I don't know eminent domain or whatever, you know, law that allows people to be displaced, I, I think it's illegal, number one, but everyone makes it, you know, justifiable to fit better, to get rid of whoever, you know, and I think that it's not right that we would, as human beings, want to displace anyone or think that someone doesn't deserve to be in a residence or to reside, and Long Beach is a great city, you know, it's a safe city, you know, and it seems, it appears to me that, um, society is always trying to put the poor people or the minorities, the blacks in a certain area and then once they learn how to survive in that area, that's not good enough and then they want to get rid of them from that area. It's just like that, as human beings, it doesn't matter the color of the skin, but it's not right that we have not a heart for one another, you know, and, and we have divisive work of ways about ourselves to, you know, demean someone or in, or a particular race or anything like that. I think that as, as, you know, as a city council, that we should have the best interest for everyone. No underlying things for the master plan because it makes me feel like it's a master plan, you know, and that's what it makes me feel like, I mean, kind of, you know, to me, and I, I only can speak as an African American, like they're trying to get rid of the slaves or something, that's how it makes me feel, like I'm not wanted in, in where I want to live, you know, and, and then the building up of everything and it's not enough, um, low income and then when you make it affordable, it's still not affordable for the low income, you know, so that's, that's deceiving right there, you know, affordable housing, but it's affordable to those that are making eighty thousand dollars, that's not affordable, you know, and it's not right that we don't, it's not even printing our heart, our conscience to even think about, you know, anybody, but I, selfish moments, you know, the salary that we're going to receive, the promotion that we're going to get. I think that everyone should, like, really think twice and really consider everyone and not yourself.
Our next, uh, person to come up will be, uh, James Hodge.
I just want to say to each and every one of you, thank you for being here, my community is here. I want to say that, uh, very quickly, everyone campaigned on transparency, everyone campaigned on fairness, and everyone said they would tell the truth and this community supported you and knew how to act when they were voting for you, but you have to be told what to do and how to do when they come to a meeting. So in the fact of transparency, I would like to ask, before I get into any other questions, can this council tell me if there's been any discussion about the Martin Luther King Center having a bid process or maybe not having support? If it wasn't you, it wasn't you, but can this council tell me, was there ever any discussion with MLK Inc. being taken out of you? I look for any council who would answer that, I'm thinking, right for that minute.
Why?
I said, can, I can't, I can't hear you because I don't want to...
because I don't want to speak directly to one candidate in particular. I want you all to tell the truth. And if you, I'm asking you, okay, whoever it is, has there been any discussion about the Martin Luther King Center Inc. being taken out of the building? Can anyone answer the question? It's not on paper, but has there been discussions? And I'm asking.
I'll answer you.
Thank you.
What?
The answer is no.
Amen.
And as far as I'm concerned, does anybody else want to answer that? I'm saying no, and I'm speaking for Len Torre. Anybody else? Never a discussion, James. And I want you to be assured that's never happened. Never a discussion about anything like that, don't you think?
Again, I think, I want you to kind of clarify the question because you referred to the bid process. And I can say as a representative of the community that this is all new information to me.
Okay.
And let me just say one more other thing. And that's why I lifted up the flyer today because I heard from several members of the community that in two weeks, the MLK Inc. stands would be asked to remove themselves from the building. And that was new information to me as a member of the city council.
Okay, so this, before November come up, if you don't want to tell the truth now, I promise you, you're one that's gonna have a hard time. Anthony Aronho and Scott Magdel. I'm asking you, has there been any conversation, and we just spoke, Anissa, we spoke, has there been any discussion? City manager supports the MLK one hundred percent. Has there been any discussion about James Hodge being kicked out, but more so the Martin Luther King Center and MLK Inc.?
But just.
No, 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 I'm at, this question is directed to Anthony Aronho.
We talked for quite a while, and there has been no discussion to remove MLK Inc. from the building. There has not.
Okay.
Without additional program, that's what you and I talked about and asked. And the city manager supports you one hundred percent, but the council supports the MLK Center one hundred percent.
Okay, Scott. Okay. So you're lying.
I'm not.
You're lying. Let me ask Scott Magdel. Because I know you were the supporter of the center. It's a meeting, okay? Has there been any discussion about throwing MLK Inc. out? Now, don't go along with the goal on, the people are here. People vote evenly in this community, in the city of Long Beach, but our community makes the decision. I'm asking you because you told them, no, let's not discuss it. Let's take it off the table. So can you tell me if there's been any discussion about MLK Inc.?
No, but I backed with Len Torre's.
Okay, so listen, you know what? Maybe it's time for some people to get out of Long Beach, okay? Because there's a lie. And if you all blame Anissa, and Anissa blames you, and different ones blame each other, then there's a lie. But what I will say is that my people are here. Have you ever used a MLK? Have you ever had a job at the MLK? Do you support the MLK? Because I heard there was no support. And also, did you ever receive a letter from community leaders saying that the MLK did not have the support from the community? Did you ever receive a letter?
I told you I got that letter.
So you have a letter. Pastor Miller is here. Jacquetta Odom is here, okay? Excuse me, I know my minutes is up, but take your time. You owe me. Okay, okay, listen, I know. So Pastor Miller and all those leaders are here that were on that letter, okay? Listen.
You told me they didn't sign the letter.
Okay, so you received the letter. Did you receive it from a councilperson to prove the point of the community center don't have support? Let's tell the truth.
I received a letter.
Say it again.
I received a copy of the letter and I'm asked email.
Okay, you received a letter. Okay, Pastor Miller is here. And Jacquetta Odom is here.
Your time is up and I will.
Okay, okay, listen, listen, I hear you, I hear you.
I don't appreciate being called a liar, James.
Okay, listen, well, I just asked you with their discussion about MLK Inc. doing a bid, was there ever a discussion about that? Why do we have exclusive rights to the MLK building?
There's discussion.
Okay, James, I think.
Can any, can everyone staying that's here to support the MLK? Because they said MLK don't have support. Thank you, James. And, 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 listen, and as I said.
James, I'd like to go on record because I think it's important. There's a lot of misinformation, and let's settle this now. I have a copy of the letter, and I'd like to go on the record to explain what the letter is about.
Who sent the letter? Go ahead.
I'd like to explain what the letter is about. There's, there's two different versions of what took place with this letter. People keep saying there's a letter that says that the community is not in support of the MLK Center. I only have one letter, and that letter clearly does not say anything that you.
How did the other councilmembers get this letter when it was to our board? How did they get the letter?
It said.
Was it for you to show that the center does not have the support of the community? Now, they don't want to speak, but how did they get a letter that was emailed to the board and you? How did they?
Here's the letter, and I will explain. It says, Dear Mr. Hodge, and I think everybody needs to hear what this letter says. It says, Dear Mr. Hodge. The resident has the right to hear the truth. It says, Dear Mr. Hodge, we thank you for your service to the North Park community. However, we recognize the continued success of the MLK Center is important to the entire community. As community leaders, we feel it is important that we stand together in light of the comprehensive plan that will impact our community. Residents have inquired and expressed their concerns regarding the future direction of the center. At present, there has been little communication or information shared regarding the following. Is the search still ongoing for the deputy executive director position? Please verify the current board members of the MLK Inc. What are the goals and plans for the 2017 calendar year? How will you share the event information with the community leaders in a timely manner? Please provide a calendar of upcoming events. The MLK Center is designed to assist the members of the entire community and residents to be aware of the events and have greater access to the resources. It is time for us all to come together and move our community forward. We look forward to hearing from you. It was signed Pastor Dolores Miller Evangel Revival Community Church, Pastor William and Rebecca Fuller Promise Ministry, and Jacquetta Odom Concerns Citizens of North Park. Now, here's your response.
No, no, hold on, and they're here. And, 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 and they're here. Okay, listen, no, I'm saying to clarify, they're here. Let's ask them, did they, did they sign the letter?
Right, but the letter that you referenced them to, they said that they didn't know anything about the letter because you said it was a letter to remove MLK Inc. out of the.
No, I did not say, they're in here. Can we ask them, did they sign the letter?
Uh, James, we're gonna stop right now. I, this is the first time I hear about this letter, and I'm glad, and this is why I committed to listen to read the letter. Let's, let's get to the order here, okay?
Okay, then there's a response. There's a response by you, Mr. Hodge. On Monday, twelve eighteen, two thousand sixteen, eight twenty-two P M. Dear Pastor Dolores Miller, Pastor William and Rebecca Fuller, and Mrs. Jacquetta Odom. On behalf of the Board of Director and Staff of the Long Beach Martin Luther King Center, we would like to wish you and your family happy holidays in the prosperous new year. I am receipt of your transmittal, and all questions and all concerns will be addressed at the January twenty seventeen board meeting and subsequent correspondence shortly thereafter. As always, thank you for your continued support and commitment to the success of the L B MLK Center. Best regards, Board Chair James Hodge. So what I'm saying is I want people to understand, this is what the letter says. How did it become something else? This is the only letter that I go with.
Okay, I thank you for allowing me to clarify. Anthony Aronho and Scott, and we worked together the other day, okay? Wasn't there a line here? I'm not, you're not even in this whole lotland. Okay, they, they said that Anissa presented this letter to prove, and they told me that Marcus Pinter, Anissa told him in a caucus meeting, or whatever, was coming to replace me in two weeks, okay? They're lying here, you're not involved, but listen, listen, listen.
That's not true.
Did you, I said that you, you were told?
I will tell you what I said.
Okay, go ahead.
And correct me if I'm wrong. I said, I heard a rumor that you want, that people want to vote you out as board chair and vote in Marcus Pinter. Now, that has nothing to do with the city.
And what did you say?
Did I not say that has nothing to do with the city?
Okay, so without.
Wait, wait, you just called me a liar. Now, did I, did I not say that to you? Is that what I said?
You did, you're lying now.
Thank you.
No, you're lying now, okay? Who did, who told you? Hold on a second, you asked me a question, can I answer?
I heard it from Anissa.
You, wait, wait, hold on a second, you asked me a question. Listen, no, so you're right, you're right, listen, you're right. You, you heard it from who?
I answered your question.
No, you said you heard it from Anissa, right? She told you that I was going to be voted out?
She heard a rumor?
And she had a letter to prove that the community did vote?
I passed the rumor on to me. That's what we do. We talk about things that we hear in the city.
Okay, so. All right, listen, let's not be condescending here because you know what? You gotta walk through our community, and our community votes heavy, okay? So let's not be condescending, okay? So anyway, I'm going to end. All right, I'm going to end. And like I said, the people united will never be defeated. 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 President Horace, I thank you for your time. Jack, I thank you for your support. There's a lot of lying going on here between councilmembers. But the community is here. The young people are free. Thank you, James. James Hodge.
You might never have such a conversation. You were calling us for Monday, and you and the councilman are on the same page. I came over to say. Okay, Mr. Magdel, we're. Most of the time I'm talking with you, sharing with me, go for it. I never had a conversation. Okay, Mr. Magdel, I'm gonna ask that we table this. Mr. Magdel, please. We can discuss this later on. We need to go on with this as a city council meeting. We appreciate everyone. We do need to, as I said earlier, we're glad that we did. Do I have to hear what the letter was all about?
Let me use.
I have not heard until now what was the content of the letter. Again, I want to appreciate and thank everyone again for the order that we must maintain.
The youth are getting ready to speak.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. With that, folks, we're gonna move on to our next speaker.
I encourage the youth council, please remain if you can because you still need to hear additional information pertaining to this subject. I think it's very important and it's grateful that you stay. This is the first time in the whole year that I'm actually seeing a lot of members of the community come to the meeting. And I'm just, I encourage you to stay if you can and to get the information that's so very important to our community. If you can't, then who do you say?
Yes, we encourage all of you to stay. Just like I said at every meeting, we encourage the community to come to the meeting. It's very, very important. Now, with that, folks, we're gonna have to move on, okay? We have Miss Yousel Silva for the lead. Is she ready? Welcome, Ms. Silva.
Hi. Good evening, guys. Be right in the mic because it won't be able to hear you.
I just wanted to share my thoughts on the topic that we should be talking about. And I want to say that I am a very proud member of the community, and I do volunteer my time, lots of my time, to help out, and I've been volunteering my time for the last eight years, to help out with the after-school program there.
Yes.
Um, I help all the communities. I, I love to help all the communities, especially with the children. I was a child on the graves on Pine Street, and I feel currently sitting there and proud to live there. It is a very peaceful community, it's a united community. Um, all I can say is that there's a lot of memory in that building. There's history in that building. And to change it would need to alter history, or the future history of the children that go there, of the children that will not go there if it's altered. So I just want you guys to understand that it's very important to us and that we care about the children. And that they have a place to go to and a resource center where they can go to as well. Um, the MLK Center has let me do my creativity in many ways that a lot of other centers have not. So that's why it's very special to me. And I'm here to see the Long Beach.
Ms. Silva, thank you so much. We just come back to the long, long way, Ms. Silva. Do we have Mr. Byron? Byron Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell? E. Zizan? Mr. Pinto? Sam Pinto, are you here?
Yes. I'd just like to thank the Economic Development Board, the Plan Department for the conversations, dialogue, and hosting meetings for the civics. And to put in record, while the residents don't know, there is another comprehensive plan presentation on the sixteenth. And if you really have concerns about the direction of it, please end that meeting. And I'd also like, for you guys to give the time, Mr. Hodge, to speak tonight. Thank you.
There's, uh, Randy. What would you say to me?
That before, um, sort of like what the law would be diamond, the councilwoman, trial by the. How to say your one fire? I'm having that on, I'm having that on. Um, I'm really here to talk about the council. I was at the meeting on Friday when we was, you know, voting in. And there was something that happened at that council meeting that really disturbing. I think this city needs to be very strong. Listen to the city, but also be strong, follow the rules, follow the charter. I heard, you know, I know that people want to talk. Many people were allowed to talk, and some people couldn't talk. They would talk of executive session. I think with everything that's going on in this country and the divisiveness and craziness that's going on with the council election, the citizens of this city are depending on the council for some guidance. You know, people have a right to say what they want to say. I don't know about rumors. I don't know about what's going on at the MLK Center. Obviously, people have a right to speak. But in the end, I believe that most of the people in this city want the same thing. I don't care what neighborhood you come from. I don't care if you are, I don't care for what the welfare is for. You represent the city. I really hope that you can manage, despite differences that you may have, to really work very hard at, and I don't want to say get any together because I don't want to be negative. But I'm asking you in the most positive way, please represent us in this state. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been, you've owed your recommendation and guidance in very high esteem. So thank you, thank you for coming. Uh, we have Ms. Karen Adama.
Karen, I have to excuse me. I probably, I should have gotten glasses a month ago because I could, I really like. Uh, I didn't write from this, I didn't write from this, right? Thank you.
I recognize my voice, ladies. Karen Adama, seventy-four, for our serve, and also welcome, and much respect, and love. Um, I wanted to speak on decorum and respect. And it's funny, I'm following France, it's like I'm always following France. Anyway, um, this is a room for us to speak on our issues, especially living welfare, whatever we have to say, whatever we like, want to say. But we must show respect. I was not able to attend a party meeting, but I saw the video. I thought it was horrible. I was glad I was not here. The meeting was completely taken over by someone who yelled and shouted and had no, no interest in order or decorum. It was insulting, it was disrespectful, it was bad for the city. It's bad for the community. It was bad for the community. And it's not right. We have rules and decorum here. Excuse me, I'm not finished, and I'm trying to speak on the decorum. If you don't know what it means, look it up.
So I stopped for a second, folks. You know, everyone deserves, folks, listen up, everybody.
You all have your turn to speak.
Oh, hold up, Karen, what do you go? You know, you know, everyone has a right to speak at the mic without being disrespectful. Folks, we need to be to that respectful, you know, that we need to be, folks, honestly. Think of what, you know, what we, how we support the teachings of Martin Luther King. I have to tell you, it's respect. And it's got to start in peace. Okay? And I want that to stop. Okay. With that... Great, finish, finish your comment, listen.
Excuse me. This comment is not only related to one person who took over the meeting. I say it's pretty much pirated meeting. It also has to do with a number of other people who stood up without permission, who profess to know all the rules and regulations of the city council because they actually served on the city council, and yet broke many of the rules. It's not right, it doesn't matter who it is. The second thing I want to say is, I support the MLK Center, and I have been there for many events. And I have been involved in many community organizations. I've been to city council meetings for twenty-three years. I do know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almone, thank you. And, uh, let us find, folks, because it's almost nine o'clock. We have Mr. Ray Elmer. Ray Elmer.
And, uh, congratulations, Mr. Stein, and I wish you the best in your position as, um, for the city council. It's, uh, I can't believe that anybody who serves on the city council knows I have the best interest of Long Beach at heart. But you did say in one of your comments that you were here for standing, and so was I. And we lost the hospital. I was on the board. And Governor Cuomo, who, uh, Mr. Moore and Mr. Torres got to see, I guess, the past week, they came up with a plan, they came up with a plan to basically bring in urgent care centers to our area. And they basically wanted an urgent care center. And they basically said to us, if we came up with a plan to reduce the hospital beds to eighty, and we spent twenty-six million dollars to get the West Wing Emergency Room ready before June of two thousand and thirteen, they said, we're not, you're not allowed to open up the hospital, go and merge with another hospital. We had St. Francis, they were going to merge with us. But they couldn't come up with the twenty million dollars of seed money. But New York State didn't say, they were gonna give the seed money to South Nassau, and they did. And South Nassau took over. They blew up the hospital for eleven point seven million dollars. We now, we were all at the debt, we turned over a hundred and seventy-four million dollars of building funds. And we turned over the buildings. What the idea is, with FEMA, they said they could be an alternative use plan, where the money doesn't have to be spent in Long Beach, it could be spent in Oceanside. As long as the barrier island has proper medical services. They found out about the burger report that says we need acute medical services. We are not finished with sand and recovery until our nine-eleven ambulances, can be, can be struck in heart attack victims and crummed. You have emergency doctors, which means South Nassau, and until that is done, we're not finished with sand and recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Almone, um, I've worked for the past year with a B.C. organization. And, um, it's no secret that I am openly an advocate for the hospital. Um, obviously, sometimes I'm in the minority, but I am openly in favor of the hospital. I believe that this is a social justice issue, and we'll continue to fight this issue.
Well, what's important here, folks, is that any time that we have our Boulevard Swim, or the, or the plunge, folks, and we have ten to fifteen, sometimes twenty thousand people, and ten thousand jumping into ice cold water. And if we have five people who have heart attacks, we're in trouble, folks. And I get very concerned about that. So this elementary point is very well taken, very well taken. I'm gonna move on, folks, because we don't have much time. Uh, we have Andre Cohen.
My name is Deandre Cohen, fourteen East Hudson Street, supporting the Long Beach MLK Center at six fifteen Riverside Boulevard. I came to discuss the issue slash rumors to take away the MLK Center and in support of my mentor, James Hodges. The MLK Center is a centerpiece in the North Park community out here in Long Beach. The MLK is a place treated as an antique to many people who check in and out of the MLK Center in the past and in the present. The MLK Center impacted my, my life tremendously by showing up frequently. Just about four years ago, James Hodges noticed me out of a bunch of people whom I used to hang out with, and he told me that he was going to be the next MLK Youth President. At first, my answer was straight toward denial, and I thought I didn't have the ability to lead a ton of youth in the community because I was shy. Over the years, enjoying different programs, and activities with James Hodges and MLK, today I can say I overcame that. Being others surrounded around the MLK shaped me into the leader I am today. The MLK opened my mind up and showed me what my true ability really is. Being the youth leader in the MLK makes me feel more connected to the youth, wanting me to do more and talk more to the youth in the community. There's a lot of problems in my community, and most of these problems come from starting at home. A lot of problems, uh, white people, we all know that we don't have, like, fathers in our lives, and maybe mothers in our lives to look up to, and our parents are our role models, and that means a lot. So these kids come to the MLK Center each and every day so they can look at, have a role model to look up to. These kids in our community need a role model to look up to, and that's important to me. Many youth in the community don't have a role model to look at, and this is why we need the MLK Center there as a centerpiece in our community, so we can continue to encourage these young kids to strive for greater life. So everyone, they're my presence tonight, I want you to ask yourself, what is right without helping one another? The MLK Center made me realize that helping people is what I'm really good at. The MLK Center is the gateway for me to continue to walk into my family's legacy. My grandfather, James Bo Madder, one of the first patrol block fans in Long Beach. And my grandmother, Robert Parker, working for the police office for over thirty years. This legacy is an inspiration to my life. I wouldn't even know the important things they did if it wasn't for James and the MLK Center. And we come here leading like they were in their, in their day. So referring to the topic of history, as Mr. Torres discussed in the beginning of the meeting, I have a history of my own, obviously, as I just did. And if we care about the history of the MLK, then we will get this problem and this issue resolved. Thank you.
Deandre, it's great to look at a person and see a future leader. Thank you. We have Miss Jackie Odom. Miss Odom, it's good to see you. Welcome.
Jackie Odom. I am the chairperson of the Concerned Citizens of North Park community. I'm also the past chairperson of the MLK team. Me and my boy was the first ones that opened the MLK Center. So as I stand here, I have a lot of life, blood, and tears from the MLK Center.
Oh, that's right.
I'm standing here to let you know that we will fight for the MLK Center. I would just like to say, I need to know, the faith of the MLK Center, is it the stand of the city council that they are ordering MLK Center off the site of sixteen fif- six fifteen Riverside Boulevard within a two-week span?
I have no knowledge of it, so I'm, so I'm to the community, it's the first time I'm hearing this.
I would like to hear from each council member.
I haven't received one pe- I don't have any paperwork from them.
Also, I would like to set for the record, it was stated that there was a letter that went out that was signed by Miss Odom, Pastor Miller, and Pastor Fuller, of the removal of the people from the MLK Center. We never signed such a letter. As a representative of the North Park area, I'd like to notify the city council that we in the North Park area will fight, fight, fight for what we feel is our last dignity and hope in this city. On the note of Black History Month, I would like to say, dear Councilmember, on November third of twenty fifteen, the city of Long Beach finally made a step forward by electing Anissa Moore. Unlikely previous candidates, Ms. Moore was not a part of the political Long Beach network. She was an everyday citizen who wanted to make a difference. On January the first, inauguration day, we watched people from all faiths, social, and racial backgrounds come together and celebrate this historic event. If Mrs. Moore was merely a black candidate, it is obvious that her campaign would have been unsuccessful. It was her ability to connect with people that made her our candidate of choice. And we have watched her demonstrate leadership skills throughout last year. Called for a peace rally in response to the Lando shooting, hosted a movement ceremony to bring us all together. We watched the moderate and the community and the political forum, one in the end called for unity. We watched our moderators and confidential plans informational section at the MLK Center. We have also seen handling the criti- uh, the critical insults and all the disrespect going to council meetings with grace. The counter was not there to capture the day she spoke calmly and peacefully to angry and frustrated youth who were struggling with the recent killings of our nation, or walking against the domestic violence with circular, or the education programs she hosted to assist senior mothers with information and school supplies. Councilwoman Moore was with the Long Beach, uh, Girl Scouts last week discussing the power of being changed agents. On Saturday, they hosted the first black male conference for the men of our community. To those who chose to continue the negative spin, we say the truth will prevail. We, the community and the people of the Long Beach, know who she is, and we stand with her in the North Park area.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Silva. Uh, we have Rashaun.
Rashaun, Rashaun. I'm here to support MLK, to support Mr. James Hodges. I'm twelve years old, I live here in Long Beach. I practically was raised here, but with my father. My whole family is here. This community belongs to me, and it means the world to me. So the MLK, from the rumor to, for the MLK Center to be tear down is not fair. That MLK Center belongs there. That MLK Center, that MLK Center has helped all the kids here in Long Beach. And now y'all want to tear it down. It's unfair. It's unfair. As you was talking about how you wanted to honor Dr. Martin Luther King, you know, honor him by keeping that MLK Center.
I'm so proud of you, young man, but I just want to say publicly, and I think I can speak for the whole council, that we are, I, at least I can say, we will not allow for the MLK Center to be torn down because of your people like you. We're very proud of you, and we are working to keep the center open.
Okay, so we're gonna keep moving, folks, we have Mr. Jay Gussford. Jay? Jay, you're gonna... Okay, Mr. Ronnie Miles.
Glad you guys get safe, please.
Um, I'm Johnny Ross, Long Beach area. You've already asked the question of, are we carrying now, replacing, removing, whatever, the MLK? Is there any future plan to do so?
Not that we know.
No. Uh, do we know the history of how the MLK came to be? I really need to know the history of how the MLK came into being. Because that, you know, when you want your history, you go forward. So how did it come into being? Did the city pay for it? Did the donors pay for it? Did the county pay for it? Because we keep hearing, the city belong, the city owns the MLK, the MLK, the MLK, the MLK. What was the purpose of the city? Is that what it was built for? To belong to the city, or is it MLK incorporated for a reason? And if we should know the history, who has that?
Well, Joe, I, I think that's an excellent question, because I think a lot of people don't really know that. Now, I was here when it was formed, I was here when it, when it was part of the Spanish Brotherhood, with both two agencies run by the Negroes' Court, this was the Nassau County funded at one time.
Nassau County funded, that's correct.
Nassau County funded, both A and C. And slowly, as the, uh, the funding dried up, the city, uh, chose to, uh, take over the babies.
In the nineties, right?
Every, yeah, I think.
Late nineties.
The MLK was built in nineteen eighty-one.
Eighty-one, eighty-one.
Yeah, it was eighty-one. Now, I remember the MLK back in seventy-two. That's a lot back in the...
Alright. Well, I would, I would just suggest to this council, um, even though we're not always present when we speak, be careful what you say.
Right, right, exactly.
It carries weight.
That's right.
And your words go before you, and your attentions also are also revealed to us. So, we actually said, we don't know the history, and we don't know who you're also with, you stop saying certain things.
That's right.
And we also need to do our homework and our research. But I congratulate you on celebrating, um, Martin Luther King and Black History Month, it's the first time ever. Well, I should be starting with you, I do.
Right.
Correct. Number two, we're gonna do a prayer, amen.
For, folks, uh, Mr. Mark McCarthy. Mark, it's really Mark, welcome. Welcome to our state council.
Good to be here for all everyone else, it's very rare for you to be here. Okay, we just need to make, uh, a little McCarthy up from Long Beach. One of my close friends, I can't really hear you. Lowest kitchen wine bar in Long Beach. Um, anyway, I'm upcoming, I believe, three and two weeks, and talk about the allowing the crock on the boardwalk and things like that. Um, I myself and Denise Ford asked you to answer as possible to put it further back into March, so we get the word out to the community and let them know exactly what's going on. Lining up, a lot of people don't know exactly what's going on with this, going with the COVID on the boardwalk. Um, the only thing I like to talk about is due diligence. You know, um, I know a lot of times here in Long Beach, something is done by way of friends and family. And I think when we talk about something like liquor up on the boardwalk, okay, it's gonna impact the community, okay, meaning residents. It's gonna impact businesses, which no one's, until you even talk about. I know Eric, you've already voiced your opinion that you want it on the boardwalk, and that's fine. But if I still have an opportunity to speak to the other board members and tell you to do your due diligence and speak to the community, find out, I don't think two weeks is enough time.
Watch out, you did it, done.
Okay? I had them recently on a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and I brought up this whole fact about due diligence, because I know someone came here from the Chamber of Commerce, and they said, uh, well, the Chamber of Commerce is behind the liquor going on the boardwalk. the litter's on the boardwalk. And I would say, okay, that's great, okay, and how did you come about that? And I explained to them, well, you know, I asked them to text each other, sit down in the pen, tell me what to do. And they explained to me, we sat down around the table, we spoke about it, and we thought it would be a good idea to allow the boardwalk, okay? And it was a report that gave the purpose in saying how they represent this. So I stood up, and I said, I'm going to do this, man, belonging on this, that is part of the chamber of commerce. And before I came to the chamber, I was speaking today, I didn't do this. I was asking, okay? I contacted eight restaurants in the surrounding area, all eight were guests, number three, my. It's, 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 first of all, I'm not here for the charity here, this is not a charity. And it's the people here to talk about the community, they don't want to go to the boardwalk. I'm here today to talk about the economic cost and cause for local residents and to businesses in this area.
That's right.
So I need you to really look at things on individual basis. And so, I say, put friends and families to the side and think with best of the community. The community as resident and the community as business. Because I don't think anyone's doing that. And I'm going, I know, Jack, I called your office today, I knew you were very busy. I asked to maybe get a meeting, I know some of the business owners of the different places up there have met this people. And I'm a long-term mate, so I can tell you exactly what people are feeling about this. Now, I've only gone to eight restaurants, and each, each one of them is outstanding. I'm sure there's more out there that would feel the same way. We originally put these food trucks up there, and I understand the reason behind it. It was to help Long Beach as far as building the boardwalk back and stuff like that. I didn't get involved in it, I didn't have fifty thousand dollars to lay out for a truck. But it was okay, I understood when I'm going with the truck, and I thought it would be a temporary thing, but it's become more, okay?
Mr. McCarthy, you make some very, very good points. And we intend to make sure that the community gets involved in this course. You know, the word has to be out there, and it's supposed to be self that you hope to bring stuff to the hearing that is coming down the pipe, and we are hoping that we get everyone here to voice their views, just like you're doing.
I appreciate it, and it's really important how you do, whether it be ads or anything. And we're not going to do it, but if it was some sort of a referendum that should be in November, just let the whole town vote on this, not just having an open forum, it's great to hear everybody, but we know it happens in open forums, especially when we have those.
We're going to take that into advisement, believe, honestly, we will discuss it, Jack. Okay, so I'm going to, I have to ask you, I think I'm something.
Okay, fine. But I think, actually, I want to, each one of you, in your individual basis, or as a group, to come to a restaurant, meet with the restaurant owners, and understand what's going on here. This is not just, you know, what's going on, it's hard. I know you want to go to the boardwalk with your family, have a drink, and you're happy to do that. But you know what, not everyone wants to do that.
Thank you.
James Tennessee, six seventeen West Allen Street, Long Beach. Just regarding the MLK, my dad was lucky enough to be with Ms. Odom, I think she left. When they opened the MLK in nineteen eighty-one, I'm proud to have my father's name on that plaque, and I can tell you. From my time on campus at work with the, with the North Park community, I can tell you that they are by far the most organized and really one of the most respected communities in the city. They give it, they take it away, so you should listen. Mr. McCarthy, I want to refer to what you said in the meeting about recruiting hours. You're absolutely right, I'm going to talk and recruit here. Charter says, no person shall be eligible to hold an election in the city of Long Beach unless she is an elected thereof, and has been a resident in a domiciliary, domiciliary thereof for the previous two years. That's a fact. So it's a fact that, I already outlined, I went to the board of elections today, and I found that she only registered in Long Beach on March 6th of 2015, which is two years ago. So it's a fact that, that her voting, any idea between, well, any idea from here on in, questions legitimacy and the legality of anything this council does. And it really goes back to the heart to question about what is really going on here. So, I noticed that over the past, you know, number of speakers, people have asked questions, and you get an answer, and that's great. And this is in the spirit of transparency, I think it's awesome. So I ask you a question. And because some people are able to ask questions to the members of the council, I'm going to ask you a slightly different question. Well, actually, I have a question for first, the city council president. How did Ms. Dine's name come up with the council?
Well, there was a posting, and she's.
So how did her name come?
There was a posting, and she named she, or she was a resident.
That she said. Mr. Ramo, Mr. Moore, you both specifically said that there was, quote unquote, exhaustive process in vetting out the city council candidates you were considering. And you, especially with respect, go words, especially with respect to Ms. Dine. Did this exhaustive search include verifying her elector status as per the city council charter with the board of elections files? I don't think that's fair. With all due respect, you gave, you let other people ask questions, and then you gave answers. I'm only asking for the same thing. So, the question is, especially, Mr. McCarthy, you said it is exhaustive search. Did that search include the vetting of the board of election files referred into the section of the charter regarding electors? As I said in the Herald? It's a yes or no? Yes or no? I consulted with an election attorney. Did that election attorney look at the board of education? I told them what they said, yes. You told them what they said? You told them what the board of election files said, so you looked at them? I didn't look at mine yet. You knew what? You knew that she, that she registered to vote in Long Beach in March 2015? I know that registration doesn't prove that.
That wasn't the question.
And I just have one more question. And this is directed to Ms. Dine, Ms. Dine, this is the person, this is the guy who's on the front. I hope you understand that. Because as you can see, we're talking about the city council and what happened behind closed doors. And I hope, I hope if you are legally appointed, you can do something about it, like this, no? But my question to you, with all due respect, is if you became a resident in Long Beach in 2009, as you told the Herald, how could you vote in every single Woodmere election between 2009 and 2015? You should vote. You just told enough answers, is that correct?
Mr. James, I agree with you, really, I agree with you. But your time is up, and we're going to have to speak with you.
You can say no, it's okay.
If you don't belong, then go.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Thanks for staying with us, it's great, I appreciate that, we appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm planning this doctor, actually, on a consulting firm called David Offy. I've begun works with MLK centers early on, so this, all work to this point, and then promote as I have taken investments in my own community in this state, as well as helping to strengthen those things that remain here in Long Beach. One of the things that I've found out, and I've come here several times, attended several events, and I'm here early morning, at 8:00 AM, and the students coming, you would be amazed at what the students receive when they walk in the door. Many of them, they come in and they receive the necessary encouragement, the necessary strength that they need. And what's also amazing is that those that are passing through come in, and it's like the bus stops, stop. All of the bus stops at the respective corners, the buses, those children are allowed to come in from the outside, from the hole for the warm. And so that's the morning. I've doubled back in the afternoon to look at the afternoon staff. Mr. Yolanda has been phenomenal, the afternoon staff. I've been dealing with frontline leadership, organization development, helping to streamline processes, helping to look at what is going to be the direction moving forward, looking at this period of additional funding and resources for programs. One of the greatest programs that they've just received funding for is the security program, including his attorney's office. So there are a family number of citizens, they've been transpired in that center for the betterment of the community. And so my role, again, although I'm a vendor, although I'm a consultant, it has been strictly promoted. And everything that I've done, I've done because I believe in Mr. Hodge, and I believe in this center.
Robert God.
Robert Coles.
Come on up, Robert, come here. Okay, you got it. We're going to move on. Okay. Next again. Okay, Rashad.
I'm sorry.
Coward, coward.
Coward, Rashad.
Coward. Okay, Rashad, thanks for staying with us, it is late, and we appreciate everyone coming to speak. Rashad, you make us proud, and you have the courage to get them. There you go, Rashad. Don't get nervous, Rashad, look at us, address us.
Just talk about why you love the MLK, Rashad. He wrote his speech, he asked a little nerd.
I know, I know. How you feel, Rashad?
So I'd like to talk about. So I'd like to talk about going to after school and going to the gym at the center. Playing basketball.
Thanks for being such a brave young man. Thanks a lot, you come up here at night.
Very proud of you, we see you at the center.
Rashad, I'd like a rematch in Madden when you're ready.
Me too.
That's what I'm saying, I'd like a rematch in Madden.
Okay, we, we have our next person. Courtney, Richard.
Mr. Courtney, Richard.
Okay, oh, you guys are very good, very good. Thank you so much.
Courtney, I don't want to rematch with you, Madden.
What I came here to talk about is my community center being shut down. I don't think it should be, it should be shut down, because there's a lot of stuff being held up the center. For example, all these recreation times for the kids to play, there's also a band going on. And that band is performing in front of Dr. Martin Luther King's lawn. This, this center is so important to our community that when there's very important, like, you know, anything, our community shows up. I know that because I go to the MLK, I've been going there since I was like five, so.
Mr. Bendo, we have Mr. Bendo again. Now, maybe a little help with this last name, Max. Monadesi? Max Monadesi? Thank you for staying with us this long, appreciate that.
Max Monadesi, twenty-five, Richard. With respect to the issue of transparency you previously mentioned, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Ed, and his statement at the beginning of the meeting, I would first like to say that there is a lot of question in regards to Ms. Dine's qualifications, but as a councilwoman, it ought to be addressed to the Long Beach community. With respect to the council, why is Ms. Dine considered more qualified than Helen Lacy to vote on this decision this evening? Also, I'd like to add that saying, you don't care what neighborhood you're from, or being mad at someone with being vocal about issues pertaining to our community is not the answer as well. I appreciate all and any grievances brought forward, regardless of how loud or complex the sun feels, and hope that we can continue that representation for those who are often improperly misrepresented.
And very, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. And we appreciate again that, your questions, and, you know, we'll find someone to get back to you on those questions, okay? But we're going to now bring our meeting to an end. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and thank you again for the kind of respect you've shown tonight at this meeting. Thank you, and hopefully everyone.